I call this Policy Committee meeting of the Lakota Local School District, November 17, 2023 to order. Mr. Zink, call the roll, please.
Mr. Dean, Cam, Ms. Bogdan, Ms. Casper.
Here, here, sorry.
Ms. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Shaffer.
Here.
Dr. Lawley.
Here.
Mr. Bowman, Mr. Zink.
I'll take a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, call the roll, please.
Ms. Shaffer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Lawley?
Yes.
Mr. Zink?
Yes.
I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of August 18, 2023.
I'm so sorry, sir.
Mr. Hughes, or second?
Second.
Mrs. Shaffer, call the roll.
Sharon, I missed the first and second.
A D and Shaffer.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Shaffer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Lawley?
Yes.
Ms. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Zink?
Yes.
Dr. Lawley, I understand you're our policy guru today.
I am, I'm not sure I'm a guru, but thanks to Mr. Bowman, he's
You're a cheat sheet.
He's giving me a cheat sheet. The first portion of the policy that we'll be looking at is 0141.2. This is Ethics Commission update language, and it's the addition of a language about board members who may be employed by corporations, business, political subdivisions, or higher education institutions, that they may offer services to the district, they have to refrain from voting, and declare their association with the organization if a vote takes place. So, the language changes based on current professional writing standards with the use of his or her, with the use of his or her as the pronouns, excuse me.
Any questions?
Sorry.
No.
I want to explain that again.
Okay, so
It relates to board members, right?
So that's not the change, the change is this language to professional writing.
Yeah, so it relates to board members that work with other corporations or employees that work
You have to not vote for, you have to not vote for your own contract, and you have to say that, "I'm being hired to do professional development for those teachers, but I'm employed by Kent State University as a professor, but I'm also a board member, and they're paying me to do it."
Yeah.
So you're not allowed to vote for that.
Any other questions?
This is an edit for Policy 2464, this is an edit that the Lakota team is suggesting. We want to update our language based on the practice of how we're now using professional development hours to help with the process of web writing, which is our gifted writing evaluation, and not leaving it just to those who hold gifted endorsement or licensure. This supports the effort to meet the gifted indicator on the state report card. So, if you take a look at the language on that, it, the web can be updated by other people besides someone who has a GIS, who has a GIS for us. So it helps us.
So then only changes on page three?
Yes.
Any questions?
Nope. Next one is 262302, and this, Ms. House Bill 33, it's an update. It's required updated language on due because the Department of Education, Workforce Development, has taken the place of the Ohio Department of Ed, and it includes RIMP language updates. REMPs are those reading intervention plans that we have to write for students who do not pass the assessments, and it also includes other additional language requirements on intervention programs. This includes the elimination of retention language, and the updates are part of a three-year process surrounding the third grade guarantee, the third grade reading guarantee, which was updated last year, again this year, and again next year. So this is a three-year policy change over time, as the state comes up with that information.
Any questions?
Next. The next one is Policy 3120.08, again, House Bill 33, it's an update. The new requirement is for individuals seeking a PAP certification, you have to, you have to have cardiac arrest and mental health training as well. And this is the same update for Policy 4120.8 and 8120. So if you take a look at the green highlighted area, that's the new language. So it's, it's in all three of those policies that are right there listed for you, making sure that everybody has that cardiac arrest and mental health.
Do they specify what the mental health training should or could be?
They have not yet, but I'm sure that they probably will through some sort of list that they typically give us. That's a good question, we can follow up and ask, I'm just curious.
So that's 312 and 412?
Yes, it's 3120.08 and 4120.08 and 8120. So the language has to be in all three pieces because it's all discussed in each of those.
I don't see that, but that may be further
Yeah, I don't see it.
All right, you keep going and see if we come across that.
Okay. Any other questions for that? Next requirement is, we've already talked about 4120.08, 5112. This is an edit that the Lakota team has, is requesting, and it's to make sure that, we're ensuring that students who are attempting to enroll as first graders have met the requirements of a licensed kindergarten teacher, as outlined in the current Ohio Department of Language, the Ohio Department of Ed Language. What's happening is, because students don't meet age requirements, they tend to go to a, an unlicensed kindergarten program for a few months, and then bring their child to Lakota, and enroll them when they really aren't of age, but they've been in kindergarten, and, and I say kindergarten in quotes, but the law says if they've been enrolled in kindergarten, that the district has to accept them. So this policy helps us to say, "You're, you're not in a kindergarten program that's been licensed by the Ohio Department of Ed."
Any questions?
Okay. 5113.01, this is, it's just a custom policy, and we can't update it, but it's intra-district open enrollment. Yeah, do you guys have any packet?
I do.
Here's another packet. I believe I missed one. Thank you. Go ahead.
It's intra-district open enrollment, taking a look at that and making sure that, if there's anything in there that we want to look at for, before staffing, so there's no action on this one at this point in time, but I would request that the committee look at it, because we are also looking at inter-district open enrollment policy at the next policy meeting, looking at that because of the growth we're experiencing, and the lack of space. So, this one and the other one, we'll, we'll take a close look at and make sure there are no additional changes. Intra-district means school to school. And we also need to make sure that we aren't overloading one school with transfers from another school, for example, and then having smaller class sizes at the exiting school. So we want to make sure we look at this one, and then we'll have policy language for you also review for inter at the next policy meeting.
Any questions?
Questions on that one? That one really is just for you to review right now.
So is there, so there's nothing that you're thinking based on what you're seeing right now that we need to modify?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're still, we're still pulling data, but I just want to have that in your hand ahead of time, and then I'll have data for you for inter-district. We're just, we're just double checking this one.
Okay, you're just putting in other data.
Yes, but the inter, you will have data, that will show any changes that we want to make, because the inter means that we're bringing kids from outside the district.
Oh, that's what I wanted to know, difference.
Yeah, inter is between school districts, intra is just us. Is there anything internal that you see that you notice that we might need to correct or change on this one, because where we're at right now with facilities? So just on, just on your radar. Then the next one is 5320, lots of green, lots of mark outs on this one. It's updated language from the Ohio Department of Health. There aren't any practice changes, nothing in our practice would change, it's just updating and clarifying the nature of the policy. Now I'll let you take a moment to see all the green.
Any questions?
In the summary, what are they amending over this?
The Board of Health has, has changed some things with the process of being vaccinated. They want to clear language on some of that. For example, it says a student does not have to be vaccinated against a disease if any of the following applies, they have a signed statement from their parent, that's updated language, a physician certifies that the vaccination from a particular disease is medically contradicted, so it's, it's just some, some parent protection language actually.
Freedom of access, okay.
Yeah.
So is this all just standard Neola updates on this? This is not anything
Yes, yeah, this is not us.
Okay.
This is, this is recommendation from Neola.
Okay. Use of medications?
I'm sorry?
Use of medications?
The next one?
Yep.
Is a recommended rejection policy from Neola. We do not use Narcan in our clinics for overdose treatment. The update for this policy just pertains to the districts who do, so this is, this would be for the policy committee to reject.
Do you need us to make that decision today?
Yes.
To reject this policy?
Correct, because we don't have this policy. But we bring it forward because Neola recommends that boards look at it, but we don't use Narcan in our school system.
Would that be a potential liability if they're recommending that we have it available if there were an overdose, and we don't?
They, they don't recommend necessarily we have it, this is for schools that do use it. It is, it is the recommendation, since we don't have it, to reject it.
It's not applicable to us.
Yeah, you just, you just reject it. That's the recommendation from that, because we don't have it.
Have then, but have our nurses reviewed if we should have it?
I can't answer that, but I believe that the nursing director did review it, but I'll double check that.
Yeah, just
Yeah.
Given that it, now, they excel at a target, so I
I think before we reject that, we need to
They excel at a target, right?
Well, and typically what happens, if you think about it, when there's an overdose, you typically call a squad, the squad applies Narcan.
Yeah, I just didn't know the timing, if that would matter, and it just, yeah, make sure that we're not opening ourselves up.
Yep.
So you could always bring it back, should the district make a decision to start using Narcan, but they don't at this point, so the policy's not applicable. So, Dr. Lawley has asked if we would consider rejection of the policy. What say you all?
So I mean, at this point, that, I, it's not the whole policy, right? It's just that one bulleted piece?
We don't have a policy.
It's, it's, we don't have, we don't have this policy at all.
We don't have this policy at all.
It's just a formality for us to reject it.
Just a recommendation from Neola, should a school use Narcan.
Yeah, again, since we haven't seen, haven't had an opportunity to read this, and I will decide once I read the whole thing.
Yeah, there is, there's another one right behind it that you might want to read too, because the recommendation is to reject it as well. It goes along with Narcan, the one that you have in your
Well, let's take a moment, let everybody
Yeah, 5330.
So we don't have this policy, but we do have a policy on the use of medication, correct? Like, this is referencing things other than Narcan?
I thought we did have something about using an inhaler. Mr. Zink, I don't have my computer here, can you look up use of medications?
Yeah. I mean, this is talking about other medications.
Right, like, I get that one green box at the end, but the whole policy, it seems like we need at least some other procedures if we're not going to have this.
I can't imagine we do, like, because there's a medication, like how you can't give met, again.
Yeah, parents to come in to give somebody Advil.
I beg you.
They go to that policy.
Yeah, there has to be, there has to be a use of medication policy.
Yeah, we have to.
Rejecting this one and keeping our current one, is what it would be.
For the love of God, I had to go.
Yeah. So, so, because this adds the Narcan, this new one adds the Narcan, so it would reject this update, keep the one that you currently have.
I don't think it's policy rejection, it's a rejection of the update.
So is this our policy? But it's
Which is the addition
Can we put it on?
Yeah, we can, we'll show you the policy.
Can we put it on screen?
This one seems to be all Narcan related.
Right.
The second one.
And then the last paragraph of the other, of the other one, to reject that policy because we don't do Narcan.
But the first one, we're just rejecting the update? Do we have this policy?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we have, he's showing it right now.
Over the corner.
Oh, look at the birdies.
HDMI? Keep going, we'll come back to it. Give me a chance to pull it up.
So, those two we'll come back to.
Okay.
The next policy is a new policy, 5337, and this is a House Bill 33 update, so this would be a new policy, not one that is currently found or needed to be revised. It's a requirement from House Bill 33, that all districts have to have a specific policy on the care of students with seizure disorders. This requires a one-hour training session for staff that will be renewed every two years, and we will add the training to our current state's training, handle it. Everybody has to go through it and pass it in order to qualify. This one is, this one's directly from Neola, it's nothing that we added to it.
Questions?
Are they going to go through reading, or just the way?
It'll, it'll be a first read at December 12th, 4/12.
And Mr. Bowman will be there too, to answer any questions, since he works directly with Neola.
This is just our brush shot at it, and I've time to read the rest of them.
Yeah. Before it 62, let's see, did I skip one?
This is 56240.
Or 6240, yeah.
Yeah, 62, 6240, the recommendation is that it's a, it's not required, it's part of House Bill 126 that allows some role in real estate valuation appeals, and Mr. Zink can speak to this, but we're not certain that you will have any interest in pursuing this option, so, Mr. Zink, we want to talk about that, one with the real estate. 6240, yeah. Mr. Bowman?
Currently, we, we don't, we don't do disputes of evaluation.
And we're not here to
It's a question, valuation doesn't get updated. That's what we're supposed to do, to speak to it.
Yeah. I remember that. Yeah.
Any questions? Questions?
This is to be rejected.
Yeah.
I'm going to ban low pants. I know, stop that, please.
We have, thank you.
That was creepy.
Yeah, I believe it's, I believe this is a reject, sorry about that. I believe this is a reject of the update, because we currently don't have that requirement.
And then, if you want to go back to the Narcan, the medical use of medications, you'll see that this is
So that is our policy?
This is our policy, and the updates of the his and her
You scroll in it.
It's changed, the pronouns are changed.
You want me to shrink this?
And it just says the educational, educational program.
I just want to make sure we have one.
And then the students, and it says the students farther down is another change, however, students shall be, and then it says the students said of his or her. And then farther down, again, another change, the student's parent or guardian is a change, and then if you scroll all the way down, it's the same policy, but we do not add students who are experiencing apparent opioid-related drug overdose. That's the portion that we would reject on this update.
Okay, so it's just that one?
It's just that. Correct. Yeah, it's a reject, and this one is a full rejection.
Yes, because that's a
That's a new one.
Right.
So you would just, if you reject this one, you just maintain that current policy that you see on the board with the pronoun changes.
Any questions on these?
And you'll still check with our nursing staff?
Yes, I've got that written down.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll double check.
All right, I think that puts us on Family Labor Standards Act, in case, were there any questions on the valuation policy? Hearing none, let's go to 6700.
6700 is updated language about the rights of nursing mothers that was issued in August of 2022, and it's now in policy. What it does is removes limits for salaried or hourly employees to just use break time for nursing mothers. So that, that is an update, and you can see it all in the green.
So they're allowed whatever time they need?
Correct, when they, when they need it. So, a regulation would be that they would make arrangements with the principal for coverage during the break time that they would need to be able to
Rest.
Pump, so. Any questions about those additions or changes? Policy 7440, there's language that's been added that expands the scope of potential security measures that the school may have in place. This adds language that there could be potential disciplinary action for anyone, students, staff, or visitors who circumvent or disable existing security measures that are in place. So all of the green identifies potential things that could be tampered with in this policy. So that is added language to our current policy, all the green.
Should we add that then to our student code of conduct, if we're adding that
You should, yes.
Code of expulsion piece?
I actually think that's a good thing to have.
Mm-hmm.
Should that also include board members? Clearly in policy, it's always
So do you want, do you want it to add staff, students, board members, and visitors? Is that what you said? Is that what you're suggesting, or no?
That's what I suggested. Board would say
Yeah, I mean, we shouldn't be circumventing any of the
Isaac?
Security management side there.
Sounds like DPC.
So that means
That's not certain. Does that sound like a side door for DPC?
So, so it was a
I think you should not tell us that's what you're doing.
Well, I go in the office, though. I do go to the office.
If you're checking in with the office.
Yeah, I do go to the office. I just park over there.
The board members, staff, students, and visitors who intentionally, who intentionally circumvent
Oh, yeah, I'm not circumventing, I'm in the office, I'm saying I'm here.
Okay, all right, so I have that correction taken care of. The next one is the one that we talked about earlier, 8120, wasn't there? That's the volunteer, it was certificated, non-certificated, and volunteer, would have that added on there, for that training that we talked about with the cardiac arrest training. That's from the beginning.
Oh, well, to sure.
Yeah, it's just, it's the addition of that.
I have to read in the classroom.
I know, that's why, I didn't see the events, I'm like, oh my God, every time someone comes into the building, they go, no, not to. Like, we'll get no volunteers.
8210 is a House Bill 33 update, it eliminates all language and options for blizzard bags. With the updated option to provide virtual online education, it's not a requirement to implement, just flexibility in the policy the district wishes to use an option during those calamity days, has to be planned by August 1st of each year. They've given us a little bit of leeway on that, from what I understand from BASSA's update to us, but we still have to have a plan in place, if we're going to try and use this option. The other thing that you need to be aware of with this particular policy is that any type of online days, or work with online, you're going to have to have some kind of contract language that also supports that. So at this point in time, even though we may have a policy for flexibility, that's an option from the state, we also would need to make sure that, that we work with our LEA on that particular policy. So, this gives us the flexibility to do that, by state law.
Questions?
And right now, I should also add, the curriculum department is working on a response to this, that then we can talk about as a district. So they're trying to come up with what we could do instead of blizzard bags.
And that would just be an event of a, an extended
Catastrophic
We're not happy this, that there's one snow day.
No.
It's like a morrow offing day.
Absolutely, no.
Or something.
That's going to go past, too, yeah.
And most, most people tend to still, even though we're on hours now, we're not on days.
Right.
Most people tend to think that the five calamity days
Still five.
Not in a row, is, is kind of what you average out.
Sure, yeah.
You know, you try to make sure that you don't miss instructional time beyond that, and if you do, then that's when you would want to go to a, some other option.
Yeah.
It would be fairly exceptional, since we have longer school days than
Correct, yes, we are, we are over the number of hours, yeah. So that, that, that does help as well. Next one is Policy 8330, House Bill 33 update, again, cumulative records for students transferring to another district must be forwarded within five school days. Stipulation is that you can only hold records if a student owes more than $2,500 in debt through fees or fines. What some school districts have been doing was they would never send you the records because the student owed $50 in fees. And this causes the schools now to have to do that, to have to send you the records, because you have to know whether the student's on an IEP, or a 504, has special medical conditions, all of those things that you may or may not know from a parent, depending on the paperwork that you get. So that one's pretty
We currently keep those moving, and for us, at graduation time, a large one, would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 600 if they had some college credit plus stuff. So, this is a very high number.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Okay, and Policy 8600, this is another House Bill 33 update. Districts are now permitted to transport non-public students using vans. The language includes requirements for van drivers, passenger amounts, and routine inspections. So the green there, on the two pages, as well as the deletions, the deletions mostly are changing it to the Department of Education instead of the State Board of Education. And just for clarification, Department of Education, DEU, Department of Education and Workforce Development is different than Department of Education. So we've got two entities now that are governing us, and the Department of Education is in charge of transportation and licensure, for the big parts that they do.
Yeah, so there's still an ODE as well as the DEU.
Yeah, but you're not allowed to call it ODE anymore. It's got to be called the state, it's called the Department of Education, and
Should make things more efficient.
Yeah. Yeah.
So with, with this, this is eighty-six hundred, right? Like a re-nasque. It, aren't there certain I E Ps that wouldn't require transportation, like if we?
Yes.
Because the way it says the district will provide transportation as a related service to students with disabilities who live in the district and attend a non-public school.
If the district does provide them with supportive documentation on the I E P, which comes for each student, that I E P would include it or would not include it.
Yeah, from the I E P. I'd have to say. Okay, yeah.
I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, the, the transportation piece, um, will be in the I E P or not in the I E P. So we have to have, we have to have proof that it's in the I E P before we transfer. Uh, accompanying policy, uh, follows its eight six five zero, you'll see, um, the changes there. These are the, um, requirements to be transported by a school van. The number of students is listed, um, the, um, it's the information about the driver's license, the insurance, all of that's listed on here as policy. And that's recommended, um, those are recommended changes to go with the transportation by van.
Great change, will be a huge difference for transportation costs, it's true.
Gives more flexibility as well.
And makes sense.
It's very nice to hear some forced deregulation from the state, so it's great.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and it saves you, uh, saves you a full bus transporting three students to a location, not even by van.
It's just logical.
Yeah, absolutely.
Counting such legislation, we won't then.
Um, the next policy is nine one six zero, this is a House Bill thirty-three update, it requires school affiliated events where there's an admission charge to accept cash onsite.
Yeah, they weren't doing that for a while.
There was discussion of that at O S B A, saying you're talking about deregulating on one side while telling us we have to accept cash on the other, like that doesn't seem like limited government and putting the power back in the schools.
Yeah. I mean, such a.
And you have to give them everything for free if you don't like it.
Well, the funny thing is the amount of people to complain about that, for the love of God.
They couldn't take cash.
Hmm?
I know. It, it opens for, it's more opportunity for improper handling of money.
Well, and, and all the schools, um, in the area, or the majority of schools in the area worked really hard to become cashless.
Right.
Exactly.
Because of that, uh, situation of auditors and everything else, and now they're turning it over and changing the fact.
Yeah, the preference is always cashless.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Right. Uh, the next one is nine two one one, this matches our recommended practice of prohibiting students from being an officer or a manager of funds from, uh, district support organizations. Uh, the green says additionally, school employees and board members will not manage or have access to district support organization funds or serve as a voting member or officer of the organization. So this is a recommended, uh, change from Neola, Ohio Ethics Commission, um, support, it's their opinion.
Will you reach out and get a clarification, because we have a man we've been putting together that specifies.
For like ten years.
It's, uh, been a process, uh, but it, the opinion we had on that said that, um, they just couldn't be at one that they supported in their own building or directly related to, which was a little bit more broad. So this would kind of eliminate that, so I just want to make sure, so I can clean that up on the other side as well.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I, we, I thought we've said, like, if you're employed at Freedom but want to be on a P T O at West, you're.
Or the West boosters or.
Yeah, you're allowed to do that because it's not directly tied, so, yeah, I.
Yeah, let me get a clarification there.
You were a leadership position, because you weren't allowed to be a leader if you were an employee. You weren't allowed to be the president even if you.
In a different school.
At a different school, you weren't allowed to be the president.
Yeah, or it'd be a change of the handbook, it'd either be a change here or a change there.
But you'd be allowed to be a vice president or anything, or both.
Used to be, you could chair a committee, you just couldn't be a president, I don't.
Yeah.
Again, ten years.
We need clarification on that.
Ten years, because it, because the rule was that you couldn't, if you worked at Freedom, you could be on the West P T O, but you couldn't be an officer. That's what our current practice is.
And that's what this is saying, that it's district wide, it's saying you couldn't be an officer, an officer who wants his president.
I don't think we do, but we don't enforce it, but that's.
Do we know when that advisory manual is offered? Did that just come along?
Say that again.
This change, when was it?
The change, it's based on Ohio Ethics Commission Advisory Opinion.
Mm-hmm, right.
Was that actually in two thousand eight?
Not sure. I know the stuff that we've been using for the manual is much more recent than that, it's within two thousand nineteen probably.
You want to look that up and, and see what that's based on? Anything else on that? All right.
And the last one is, uh, policy nine two seven zero, this is a House Bill thirty-three update, we're no longer using the term homeschool. Um, it's now referred to as home education, and it reduces the requirement of home education, reduces the notification required to the school district, and reduces the eligibility for extracurriculars. Um, this took effect, it's a new law, took effect on ten three, two, eighteen twenty-three. So in the past, homeschoolers, uh, parents had to apply to the school district to be approved. And the way Lakota does it is we accept the application and then send it to Butler County, and they manage that.
Okay.
Uh, as of October third, um, they don't have to notify us at all.
They just go directly to Butler County, or like they just homeschool and we don't care?
Correct.
Is there any governing body of that or management making?
So kids can get no education whatsoever.
Correct.
And, okay, can they still participate in our classes?
Uh, it reduces that eligibility for them.
If they don't register into school?
They, they would have to register some way to get into our classes, um, so it reduces, they, they can't participate in extracurriculars if you have a policy that allows that. Um, and it reduces the, um, opportunity to attend our classes.
So this, that the child's exemption from attending school shall be effective upon receipt of a notice, so we do have to get some notice then, or?
Channel separately, but.
They don't, they don't have to notify us at all.
So then how do we exempt them from attending, if they're giving that, that policy?
We don't, we don't have that, yeah, we don't have that power anymore. Uh, I've received several letters from attorneys that have said, um, my, uh, homeschooling parents do not need to tell you that they're homeschooled.
And it seems a contradiction to our.
It does.
Yeah, exactly.
It tells you, that child's, it's, it tells you, child's exemption from attending school shall be effective upon receipt of the notice.
Yeah.
Now, go to the top, go to the first paragraph change, this might be something needing some clarification through legal before we put it on for a first read? Unless this changes the legal opinions that you've had in the past. A child who's enrolled in the district following any period of home education shall.
This is, this is contradictory to what, um, the law, because they don't, they don't have to notify us at all.
That's what I thought.
And this is saying that they do.
I know.
Yeah, the simple fact.
So I think, yeah, we need, maybe ask Neola on this too, because it's.
So prior to, prior to the first read, um, can you get clarity, there Neola or legal, somebody?
Yeah, because if, you're right, though, that if they don't have to tell us anymore, we don't know they're homeschooled, then they have no access to get into our classes.
Right, or, or sports.
Or sports, or.
But it's not just saying that, this is saying in order to, with, oh, somebody to do that, they need to provide notice, that's a shell, it's not a main.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one is.
All right.
One of those.
Yeah, this is, this is contradictory to what legislation, what legislative update, updates that I have received.
Right.
This is contradictory to that, so we'll have to.
We'll be, you'll do some more.
Say again.
You'll be some more working into that.
Yes, absolutely.
Or make the policy good, would you?
In the back of the packet that I gave everybody, beginning of the meeting, there's a couple of, uh, new pages that we just found out about since, since the return from the conference.
This is starting with, uh, zero one five five?
One five two, uh, the, a lot of those that were in there were for the, uh, they were just attached to the minutes, it's like the very back five pages of that packet.
So you have, you're fixing the policy seven?
I'm starting with zero one five five.
Yeah, one.
Yeah, that's classic.
So would you have to?
Yeah.
Yes.
Zero one five.
We're all starting with zero one five five.
Okay, those are all from the previous meeting, they were part of the minutes packet.
Okay.
Very, very back, get past that, at the very back, the last five pages is where those begin, because that's where it's beginning, I was sifting through trying to find them all, so.
What?
Okay.
Uh, one five two zero, employment of administrators.
So we're only looking at one new one?
And then that's the start.
That's fine, it looks like this.
Looks like this.
Yeah, I got it.
Stinkles would be handy next to, just so.
Okay, so, is there one there?
Okay, go for it.
If you flip over to the back page, this is a clarification, uh, I do remember when we put this in place, uh, gave flexibility to have two twenty-seven administrators. However, the policy didn't get cleaned up to specify who did and didn't receive vacation days. The two twenty-seven, uh, administrators do not, that's been the practice since, they don't receive vacation. So this is putting the clarification around the two sixties receive vacation, the two twenty-sevens do not. So that was what that update is, just in alignment with our practices.
Are we gonna get that?
Yeah.
Thanks to Hannah, Hannah Davis, and our favorable team for reading, for meeting, and bringing that to us. Uh, and then this is just corresponding admin guidelines, just to show everybody how that would be updated. The last page is in redorser appropriation spending plan, this document came up with, um, the recent permanent appropriations. And I highlighted and read that bottom paragraph, and then on the back, you would see the recommendation that I'd have. On this back page, it shows the test that we did on the, the actual administration of the policy that makes it challenging. And especially the larger we were getting, the more diluted those student counts, because I wasn't reading that the right way, so we added that into this test after financing. And it did shift a little bit, but, um, those percentages are overly large, and they're kind of getting smaller as we get bigger. So the recommendation would be for, in the appropriations, me to give this to the committee, or me to give this to the board with the appropriations, attach it, keep everybody looped into what's going on. But I have the concerns with upcoming contract negotiations and things that, with so many unknowns that we're dealing with, I don't want to be at risk of violating our policies, that would make it hard to do multi-year contracts like we've normally done.
So, and you also mentioned that, like, with the COVID dollars that cleaned some of our expenses, then it distorted what the numbers actually were.
Yeah, that's where, that's where, if you remember, I brought that up in the board meeting, that there was a, uh, much larger than normal percentage change, but it was because of those COVID dollars coming back onto our general fund, which we planned for, and if it wasn't for that very high inflation, that could have potentially posed the risk of violating policy, so. This is a cleanup there, want everybody to keep the information, stay in the loop on it, but I don't want us to be bound to, yeah, the show has to go on as well, so. Any questions? On that.
Maybe I think we're back to you, policies to discuss for you, or do we want, make our way through all of these?
We're, we're through all of them.
Yeah, we made it through all of them.
We're through all of them, and we have some follow-up to do before you.
Day on the twelfth.
Have, uh, anything to do on the twelfth with them, so some may be up for first read and others may not be because we're working on that, so.
So more of a few policy consideration holds ongoing research?
I'm sorry?
Policy consideration holds ongoing research, anything under that?
No, we're still working on the, um, um, the open enrollment one, that's the one I mentioned earlier. So that's the only research that we're doing right now besides you looking at the intra. Straight. Okay.
All right, um, you have the recent board approvals?
Nope.
Anything else, anyone who might bring it forward? All right, if there's nothing further, we will adjourn. We will start facilities in about fifteen.
Cool.